Board Finance and Operations Committee meeting. We call this meeting of the Board Finance and Operations Committee to order. We'd like to welcome the audience. Viewers may watch the board meetings live online at tkfs.net/board. And recorded meetings may be viewed on demand at the same address. And you've done roll, so everybody's here. We're quorum. I don't see any public. There's no public comment. Draft committee meeting minutes from July 31st, 2025. Could I have a motion to approve the meeting minutes as presented?
I move to approve the meeting minutes.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Bids and services, capital projects, electric vehicle charging station.
That one actually we moved to informational.
Oh, that's right.
Last night, sorry.
I got all the junk out there.
Yep, sorry about that. Yeah, we'll talk about that when we get to informational. It doesn't require board action because it actually came in under the $35,000 board threshold, so we'll talk about that in a minute. The only one that does record action from the board, I know Dr. Van Wegenor has been talking to you about a change order for the Saban project. So as you know, actually both the facility storage building, the Saban building, and some of the train work have all kind of come in under budget. And we've got some contingency. And really, what I believe and Patrick believes is critical is to get the rest of the central office over to Saban. So one of the things that we learned at a safety conference in May, especially from Oxford here in Michigan, was a lot of their central office staff was stuck in the high school and couldn't actually run the district or the crisis or any communication. And so we feel it's critical to have them not be a central high school. Out of all of our buildings, it's likely that an event would happen at a high school and to have the superintendent, both of our chief academic officers, communications, all at the high school and possibly stuck there, not able to help with communications, running the crisis or reunification center. We feel it's really important to go ahead and spend a little extra. So I'm asking for a change order to the original Saban project that you approved for 1.5 million. The nice thing about this is we've already awarded contracts to multiple trades. So the architects are working on an addition about 3,400 square feet to fit about 11 folks on that site. We can do a change order to the existing project. We don't have to go back out for bid. We can work and negotiate with the existing contractors on site, which will save time and money. So we are asking for permission for that 1.5 million. And that's a combination again. It's from capital bond overall, but a savings from train, savings from Saban and the facility storage building.
Now, will there be a budget amendment to the central high school renovation because you had originally accommodated staff over there?
No, it was budgeted, but it was never approved. It was just a line item. So, yeah.
So there's no...
Yeah, we don't do budget approvals on capital projects. It's the approval process when it's purchased.
Okay.
We never, we didn't do anything.
Yeah, I set aside $100,000 for makeshift offices. That will go away.
Okay. Robotics has still even not got all their stuff out of there yet. So, you know, the other piece I'll add to this is that, you know, we've talked a little bit about even, you know, music and different things over in that wing, you know, we don't know. One of the struggles I did have, I, you know, originally I was, I am a big believer in trying to be frugal with all this is when we were originally trying to do it, is that in the end it was temporary and we were going to spend some good money that in the end might have gotten tore out to do something else with that area for kids. We won't do that now, you know, and I feel, you know, in this idea that it's not throwing good money, it's bad in the end, but it was a temporary idea. But I had the chance also at a different time to hear the, some of the administrators from Oxford. And, you know, it, it was definitely, a lot of the issues they had struggled because people couldn't get out. You know, they couldn't, they were locked down. They weren't, you know, there was nobody in or out. And, and once the, you know, incident happened, like, they were stuck. And I hadn't thought about that at all in the process when we were doing that. It just, you know, it didn't cross my mind that, you know, you, you might even think, oh, we can get out quick or, but no. You know, in that situation, you know, your training, everything is very critical for kids, teachers, staff, employees. And so, you know, I think this is still the very, very most frugal way to be able to do this at this point. And, and after all that, I kind of did have a change in thought with it.
And just a question, just because I know for a while there was just some thoughts about permanently being at Saban, like, after the fact. And so I just, you kind of...
Yeah, and I've come around on that too, and I'll tell you why. You know, at one point I really thought we might end up back here with central office in the end. And as I really kind of looked at the landscape of our school buildings, I think that one of the things that intrigues me about this building and possibly the Oak Park building that Lisa ends up, and with the ISD, I'll begin conversations with Tara, the new ISD superintendent soon on that, is that you have two buildings in the heart of the school district in town with early childcare. And, and I think that there's some real conversations to have of space that even, you know, private providers need. Is there partnerships? Is there, are there all those kind of opportunities with that? Eastern, as big as it is, you know, you don't really, you know, you don't want these mega huge elementary schools. Like, are you able to do something more with the preschool programs and things out of these buildings that I think gives you that flexibility that I think is more important personally than a central office being in town? But still have that, that opportunity. We already at Saban leased space to the state police. I've even had conversations with them. They, you know, at one point there was talk to them leaving, but they actually really liked their space. They've told me and would even consider more if it ever became available. So I think if for some reason the board in the future changed from that thought, you know, the, the small, it's not a huge space that we're adding. We're being very minimalist. There's, there's not a board room onto it. There's very little conference room kind of space and those things. We're still gonna have to figure out, you know, at least while central grade is being done, exactly where we do board meetings. We think we can fit it in maybe the training lab over there. But we might have to bounce to one of the schools, you know, for a couple of years for our central grades being done. So this isn't, you know, like a whole central office build out, you know, at all. I'm very cognizant of wanting to make sure from the projects that we have here that, to an extent, you know, giving back some of that money into the bond for the projects that we promised of, of music and central grade, that we're putting money back in that can go to ensure the board is, is completely be able to do that. And so this is a minimal amount that will create permanent space. And then the board, you know, I talked all along, at some point, we are going to have to start having conversations about those two buildings. And what do we see from a future standpoint for early childhood, for preschool? Some districts do a early childhood preschool first through first grade buildings. You know, it'll be interesting what happens with build out, you know, towards the frame year and all of that, of what Oak Park, you know, could have pieces in that. So at, at some point down the road, it is a larger conversations with those two. And I think that buildings for kids and having that flexibility is gonna be more important.
I, I agree. And I, I've talked to Jessica a lot because she runs our license programming. And when you have a lot of your programs in one building, it's so much easier from a licensing perspective as far as substitutes. I mean, we can't have just anybody go in a classroom with kids in a licensed program. They have to be licensed. They have to have the credentials. They have to get their testing. Even just for lunch coverage for 45 minutes. So it, it is much more efficient to have all of the programs in one building. And, you know, we've talked for several years. There's a lot to like about Oak Park and Eastern. They're the same boundary. If you wanted to do a segregation of grades, let's say you did GSRP preschool, JKK, the bus could go to both. It's the same boundary. So there's a lot of options there. And with this building, I love this building, especially for like a large summer school option. And there, there's a lot to like about that. And really only having two buildings left as a school, I mean, we used to have 17 elementary buildings. It scares me not to have a couple ready to go for classes. You just never know with enrollment what's gonna happen. Yeah.
I, I, you know, I, and I love that we're changing course as new things arise, and I support the idea of, of safety and learning from others. Not thrilled that the headquarters are moving out of the city. Doesn't excite me too much.
Not permanent. You know, if the board thinks in the future to do something.
Well, I mean, I bet, I mean, not permanent, but could be permanent.
Could be, yep, could be.
But I guess my, my question is, was this building at Oak Park? So I really love to hear that, what you just mentioned and you mentioned. I think that's a big gap in our community and something that, because what I don't want is what happened to Birth of Us. And I guess as we sign off on, on this build out, even though it's small, in my mind, we will be out there headquarters for the foreseeable future, you know.
At least while central grade is being done, very, very minimal. You know, at least three years.
I just think it's so, I mean, we've seen all the data since when we were closing buildings in 2016, people want in-town schools. And I think it's more important to leave these schools for kids. What, that's parents' choice. Parents want their kids in, in-town schools, and having them available for them, I think, is really important.
Especially early childcare.
So you say just maybe for three years. So if, if this, then, like, in your mind, what, what, what would other options be if it was just for three years for, say, central office?
I think that you would start to build out this building for like central office. Or move in just like we just did now. I mean, we're here, right? I mean, you could, there's nothing stopping a board from going through and doing exactly what we're doing now. You know, but that gives you that option. And I just think, and I will tell you, I've gone, I'm, I'm, I'm 180 from where I was two years ago on this right now. I really thought, no, we need to be in town for central office. We that. But as I've looked at the climate and I look at, as I talk to people, talk to somebody even yesterday about they're looking at maybe an initiative at community support for more of an early childhood, like, village program. Like, to be able to provide childcare and that like Leland County does right now. And, you know, and so I just look at this building, just from a central grade standpoint, you know, the, it, it has a good location for that on this side of town. And I look at, I look at Oak Park and it has a good location for that side of town, you know? So like, there's a lot to liken that, but I'm not, it's kind of calling the game in the second inning here. Like, the board's gonna have to grapple with that tie, you know, and, and, you know.
Yeah, and we're grappling it with right now.
Yeah, yeah.
And I, and I, and I hope that we'll talk about it at the full board meeting. But again, and I, I love the early childhood and I think it aligns with what we're about to approve with our early literacy and strategic plan. So I guess whenever that time to grapple is, I'd rather do it sooner than later. I do think it's, it would meet a big need in our community.
Yeah.
I really do.
Well, like I said, I think there's gonna be a quickly come-to conversation with some folks I just had. Like, I just had that conversation about some people wanting to build a coalition, a group together to talk about that early childhood and, you know, possible, like, you know, county-wide, like, village kind of thing. Like, that, you know, it would be more of the, of the Great Start Collaborative, you know, the ISD, you know? Because I even said, is that, is that like a five-county thing? Like, they, they didn't know. But like, it intrigues me that we've been having these thoughts and all of a sudden there's a community group that are having those thoughts.
Yeah, and I think the timing is perfect.
Yeah, I do too.
It could be an activity or a strategy to meet some of these goals we're just setting up, so.
There's so many options. We've even talked about some, possibly some centrally located options for EL students. You know, we're so spread out to be able to provide services to all our students. So spread out, is there something we could do locally? In, in those very early stages, like, there's just so many options.
Yeah.
With our center-based programs, with MIKAI, and everybody wants in town, even the ISD. They're looking for classrooms in town too.
Yeah, from a, from a real estate perspective, great to have the properties, this property in Oak Park. And, I mean, for, gosh, for years we've been talking and spitting all in different ideas of what could be or what do we need or what does the community need. And so, great to have those options. And as much as Birth of Us was, you know, hard, I think some of the decisions, you know, putting the baccalaureate program out there was a challenge. Like, people don't want to drive across town, even regardless of the, the, the programming. And, you know, and, and we've seen birth rates and the growth over there. We're not, they're not, there's not families moving to that location, so.
And you just, you know, so many people work in town. So, you know, I think that they might be willing to stay and want to stay within their communities, maybe when they get to those, you know, grades of, you know, when activities and things are happening, but from a preschool standpoint especially. There's just a lot of people on their way into town, drop my kid off, go to work, you know?
Yeah.
And there, there's definitely something to be said about that. And, but it, you know, preschool is, it's going to need to be a multi-faceted, multi philanthropy or a governmental organization. Like, it's gonna need to be a community conversation, not just a TCAP's conversation. But I do think that we would bring an interesting piece of facility right here, you know, and on the other side of town that can, is a big piece of that puzzle that I'm excited about starting to get involved in conversation.
Well, let me, for, well, since I was on the board previously, we have talked about Glen Loomis. Forgetting for the moment what TCAP's needs this building potentially for. There's no better location for a daycare preschool than right here. And that means that people like Munson or Britain Banners or any number of the large employers are desperately searching. It's, it's too bad we don't have it available now.
Well, and, and we had that happen. So the Y came, Andy came to me from the Y because they were shut down from theirs. And he said, John, is there any way? But we were in here. So the only spot we had at that point, we had a couple of classrooms on a quartet. And they even were considering that. They ended up at Kensington Church. But like, if we'd have had this building, they'd have taken us up on it in a second.
Well, look at our toddler classroom at Montessori. It's full with a huge waiting list. And we used only one run, one class. Now we have two. That's 18 months. I mean, it, a long wait list.
Well, the other thing is, I, I will agree with Ty. I, I don't like necessarily, I know we have to do it. It's a necessity. I don't like the idea of central office being at Saban. I think what we run the risk of doing is the community who might want to attend a board meeting on a whim, chasing us around, trying to figure out where we're at today, or where we're at tomorrow. And I, I would prefer you even consider Central Grade School, the third floor, as potentially an option for...
And again, that can be at that point. I just, I don't know. I know we think of it that way in town, but I think it's like five miles, six miles.
It's six miles.
You know, for a district that's 300 square miles, I mean, it's not, it's not much.
The thing that I, like, the benefits I see on the operational side, it's right by transportation, it's right by facilities. Printing is there, technology is there. It's actually more centrally located in our district. So when we have staff coming from Westwoods for meetings, it's actually more centrally located for Quartet and Westwoods than it is for here.
I don't disagree that it benefits us to have it out there. I'm just saying from a community perspective, it's, it's out there. It's not in the central area of, like we are now, like we were at Boardman. And there's a certain part of consistency that the general public is looking for. If they want to attend board meetings, they don't always plan ahead for that. And chasing us around the district trying to figure out where we're at, I, I don't know. I, I know we have to do it. But it's not, it wouldn't be my preference to be out there.
Well, like you said, I think that could be a conversation. This space I, I'm not worried about because, you know, I do think that if the board ever in the future just said, no, we want to do something different, you know, there's, as, as you know better than anybody, there's always people looking for leased space. Especially partners that we have that could be a part of that, that, you know, I, I always have different conversations with the, you know, not this particular group, but as an example, like Big Brothers, Big Sisters, partners of us. It could be interesting. And having some multiple of our, of our friends, you know, in leased space that they're looking for. So, you know, again, I'd, I'd rather throw good money at good concepts than redoing something that we might tear down because we want to do something in a school building right now for kids. And we're three years away from central grade from a third floor to figure out exactly what that looks like.
I'd just like to consider it as an option.
Yep.
I mean, I think that location is ideal from a community perspective, so. All right.
I support moving this on, hopefully into discussion. I think this is a really important discussion that aligns.
We'll have it, we'll have it.
All right, so thank you. I think it's, it's great.
Yep.
All right, what would you like from us? Is this informational or do you want some kind of...
Um, this, we need approval on this, so it's whether you want it to go to consent or discussion at the full board.
I would like it to go to discussion.
Yeah, I think it's an important piece, conceptually, for the whole board to weigh in on. So I'd like to move this. And are we in agreement that we move this on with our recommendation that we approve? Okay.
So just...
I don't have a formal motion here, so I'm just going to...
You need one.
Yeah, I need one.
I'm gonna hold you to your polit- I'm gonna hold you to your politarian.
I was looking at the same thing. That was great.
Somebody's gotta create this on a whole cloth.
Fair enough.
I move that the finance committee move this to the whole board for discussion.
Second.
This being $1,500,000.
The Saban's change order. Yeah, sorry.
Jamie, you got that?
Got it.
Can you translate that, please?
We're good.
All right, all those in favor? Say aye. Opposed? And we will put this on the discussion agenda. Okay. Next.
Next, informational.
Yep, do you want to go to the charging stations?
Um, I'll let Paul give a summary of that.
Sure.
The, the overall project was the two grants that we got, EPA and what was the other one?
The state.
State grant.
State school bus, like the school bus grant.
Um, so to purchase the bus and then to purchase the accessories, which included the station, the charging station itself, which we've purchased. Now, this is the infrastructure to be able to plug it in. So he's been working with Consumers Energy. If you can just give a high-level overview of that work you've done with them.
Sure. So we've, we had a bus coming. We got the charging station sitting in the warehouse, so we needed to get it put in. So we bid, I had needless engineer installation of the charging station. I put a package together. We bid that out. We actually got four bids on it, and three of the four bids were below our bid threshold. So we're looking to award the installation. Consumers Energy has got a lot of work ahead of them as well. They're, and they've taken it on. They've got a whole group that's all about electrical charging for vehicles and that. And they've kind of grabbed right onto it, and they're starting their design work to bring the power we need over to the, a certain pole there at the bus garage area. Because we don't have capacity in the bus or in transportation itself to feed this charging station, so.
Just from a community perspective, I know TCLP has been advanced on this as well. Did they bid this or were they not in the service area?
They're not in the service area. Consumers Energy services the transportation facilities and part of the data center out on that side of town.
In Saban area, okay.
So we've been working hand-in-hand with them, the engineers. We're working with them to make sure everybody's on the same page so that they're gonna bring the power to a meter. They're gonna give us the meter. And then from there, we, our contractor will take it and install the charging station.
Okay, so you don't need anything from us. This is informational at this point. All right?
Hopefully the bus comes before the grant deadline, so we can pay for it before the grant's over.
It's always called it, you know. Okay, summer project update.
Sure, I, let's, all right, what happened here? I was starting off with the train work. There's a lot of work that's been done over the summer by train. And we've been talking about it quite a bit in our meetings here. But as you can see on this, this is just a, a quick little update of where they are with the different installations they're doing for us. Lighting, plumbing, the building envelope work. So you can see some of, a couple, three of them here are 100% done. And that, there was a lot of work at West Senior High this summer with the heat pump replacement. They replaced 119 heat pumps out there. And we've been doing boiler replacements at a couple of the schools, like West Woods and Blair, have the new boilers. So now the ice or snow melt that we had put in when we did the renovations there will be activated. I have that this winter. So this is just a quick little look at where they are with that work. They're wrapping up, cleaning up, closing things out. They've got a lot of controls work to do this fall for the new systems that they put in place.
They'll start, start this building in October with lighting, and then the boiler.
They'll do piping and plumbing for the new heating system in here, starting in like January. They'll do piping and plumbing for the new heating system in here, starting in, uh, like January, February.
So, all the key unit heaters, some of the elementary schools have been replaced?
Yes, they have, Westwoods in particular, Blair, um, they Quartade and Silverlake are next summer. Trying to think where else they do them. The unitments have been replaced, so now the distribution system's from overhead, not at the outside window, so.
And a lot of that work was subbed, correct?
Johnny Green, DNW, uh, Wyndham Mueller's been working with them, they've been using local, uh, contractors and subs.
All their equipment, their controls, so u- uniformity across the board.
No, I understand.
And, but then they, they have the contractors they work with to do the work.
Where we have with that, just a summary here, the music classrooms and art classroom partition separations were done at Long Lake Willaville. Cherry Nolan and Silverlake, this happens to be Long Lake, and we also replaced the, uh, flooring in the music room there. And again, the lockers were done at Blair and Quartade, they've come through and adjusted, uh, done their final adjustments on that. And you can see the teachers are already assigning lockers to students.
Speaking of that, I, some of the closeout cleanup for some of the classrooms, they, they need to stay on top of that, because obviously we're turning those classrooms over to teachers with not a whole lot of time to do what they need to do to prep for school, so.
Yeah, teachers are in their classrooms.
They're in their classrooms too.
I, I know, they just need to make sure that they do as much as they can to make them clean when they leave.
They, uh, they have been, they've got separate cleaning crews they bring through too.
And they're still doing it, and they're still doing work.
If we have any issue, they come back, they're doing a great job.
Yep, I was over in Traversites last night talking to the teacher, I was in the class, there, there was a teacher putting her classroom together at about six thirty last night, that was, they're talking to her, so.
I've heard from a couple of teachers who are very.
They're, I know, they're anxious, but.
Yeah.
All right, we'll get it.
And, of course, the bleacher replacements were done at Blair.
They're all ADA, correct?
They're all ADA accessible, they've got all new handrail systems, so when they, you know, you don't have to put them in as you pull them out, they're already there and they expand out. New schools, East Middle School's the, was the biggest one. And Trav Heights, so we had inspections yesterday, we, like, we've got our temp CFOs. Like I was saying, the, uh, electrical inspector isn't available right now with the state, he's fallen down, so he'll be coming around afterwards, they're trying to, uh, uh, cover his workload, there were some sixty-some projects that they're behind. Inspecting with him, but we do have our temp CFO, so we're good there.
Paul, is the yellow gonna be glass, or, oh, it is, okay.
It's coming Friday.
Just curiosity, yeah, okay.
The glass is, the glass is coming tomorrow.
Okay. Nothing like squeaking.
Well, we, we, this. You could use this if you need to, it's fire-rated material.
Yes.
So the, we had to do this a little bit at the innova- innovation manufacturing center, still the safety glass game, so.
Yeah, and that's what we're waiting for, this, the glass is where the, um, dense glasses, the yellow stuff is all the, uh, impact rated glazing.
Got it, cool, that's good.
This is the cafeteria last night.
Wow.
Four thirty. Flooring's all in, ceiling pads will be going in today, uh, we're doing fire alarm testing over there today. And the Bureau of Fire Services is doing their walkthrough inspection, so.
Wow, it looks great.
And the prep kitchen is ready to go?
Uh, the kitchen.
We didn't make any changes.
Door stayed shut.
Their cleaning crew did come in and clean, there was a little bit of masonry work that was done on the outside wall, but again, the cleaning crew they had came through and took care of all this. This was last evening too.
Yeah, that's gonna look like what I went through.
Yeah, they're finishing that corridor, the orange shirt, the guy in the orange shirt at the end of the hall, there's a, a wall across there uh, right behind it, that is gonna be a temporary partition in place, uh, to separate the rest of the construction that continues at Trav Heights until it's done and ready, so. And we did manage to, uh, this was a, a last minute add to the project through train. We replaced the boiler at, uh, Trav Heights as well, the summer, they jumped right on it, got it in there, and it'll be ready to go shortly, they were filling it with water yesterday.
What do they do with the old boilers, should we scrap them, or return and sell them as, okay.
Yeah, no, no, there's no reselling them, there's no purpose.
Those people for the bottom.
Are you interested, 'cause we can tell you, we can give you a number.
Pay scrap price for it. Okay.
So, out at West Senior High, the circulation pedestrian improvement project out there, let's, we'll start at the front, this is a new end sign at the entry. Uh, on both sides, it was replaced this summer.
It's so much better. I don't know if you remember that old digital display that top that didn't work? Didn't work, yeah, yeah.
So this is the new entryway, um, right now, th- those barricades and all that will be moved tomorrow morning uh, over to the old, to the east side entrance, that east side entrance will be closed completely off, and this will open up.
The light, and the light will be bagged, right, so there will now be only one light on Long Lake Road and Hurtner.
Is that happening before school starts?
Before school starts.
It'll be bagged, they won't, like, remove it until October, but yeah.
Yeah, they're, the new light, they've got new lights coming, that's the county's project.
It's confused right now.
So now there'll be one light, one turn, like, all there, sidewalks in, whole deal.
I see the sidewalk.
See it right here, this is the new crosswalk, so there'll be striping the crosswalk across here and that, and there's the sidewalk that goes up, that goes all the way up to the school.
You can see them, yeah, you go. So great, excellent.
So, so you can see some of the markings down, uh.
We're super excited about a dedicated bus loop, so cars and buses and kids don't have to mix anymore.
I threw this on real quick, so this, this'll be barricaded off, we're not gonna take it out this fall, this roadway, 'cause they'll use it for access next summer, when, when they're doing the other half of the project. And that, but this is the, this is the traffic pattern, it'll come in, and, uh, buses will come down into the bus loop. Other vehicle or traffic, parents and students will come around here, and it'll turn into two lanes as you go around the east side of the building.
So one way and just the other way.
One way, one direction, and this is the outside of it here, there's a cross here, if you, if, uh, a bus comes in off seat or run, it can come in here, or if you forgot your kid, when you came to pick him up, you can go back around and get him.
All right, well, it looks great.
But this is a.
So that's the student drop-off lane.
This is the student drop-off, yeah, right through here.
And then student parking.
More of it, the handicap parking on the, on the top.
And what's the, what's the fire lane, the?
Out here?
Yeah. That's the.
That's this, that's the circulation lane, takes you all the way around the school.
Okay.
So, you, you're parked here, there's a couple of crosswalks for the, uh, where the student drop-off is, that's the only traffic you'll have to cross if you're parked in this lot, when the other side gets done, there will be no lane to cross at all on the other side. It'll, parking will all be up against the sidewalk.
So, the travel lane's in the back, okay, yeah, yeah.
All the traffic on the outside, everybody inside walking into the school.
Great.
And we got rid of a lot of concrete that was in here, this is all the grass now, we replaced the, uh, snowmell system that in the, on the entry side here, the other side of it will be replaced next year at the main entry. New ed, new, uh, new paving, new entry into the backside of the, uh, auditorium, and that up there as well. And then the drive into, uh. I can use the red door.
Great.
And that's, this is the temporary signage, uh, the new stuff is on bigger stanchions and, uh, it's got a bigger background behind it, but we had to put some temp in, because those weren't quite ready yet, and you can see the crosswalk signs here.
It's a push button flashing.
Button flashing.
We'll see how many parents go through the bus lane to drop their kids off.
I was just gonna say, we're gonna need in the beginning to have some, probably some people out there.
Yeah, I'm gonna talk to Brian and see.
Here's a hard, here's a hard, uh, striping.
Yeah.
Buses only.
You always get the parents, though, that squeeze in behind a bus and fly by and drop their kid, no.
We're gonna need some law enforcement help a little bit, but I'm meeting, I'm meeting with the sheriff this, uh, the, tomorrow, so I'll, I'll mention it to Mike that, hey, Mike, need a little help with this, just.
In the beginning, they'll be like, yeah.
Seeing people that go straight over roundabouts.
So, there'll be, uh, when they, uh, close this, uh, or open this new side up tomorrow and, uh, close the other entrance off, there'll be one lane open around the building, uh, tomorrow temporarily, so they can do the other arrows and striping, uh, in that two lane, and then they'll close the lane they finished or the one that, uh, they just did, move over to the other lane, do the other side. So it'll be a, a day or so here, you have to be out there Saturday probably, finishing some of the directional arrows and, and painting on the, on the pavement. But it does open tomorrow morning.
All right.
And then we relocated, uh, Northwest Ed, uh, classrooms, and you can see they're moving into their spaces. That were redone for them on the second floor of A Wing, out at West Senior.
That was the old robotics classroom, all that.
Moved them in there, and then we got back a couple of classrooms down on the first floor, and, uh, we're moving into those with classroom furniture and setting those rooms up as well. This is a restroom renovation, um, on the first floor at West Senior, the, uh, that's in place now, I took these pictures earlier this week, so these are being all inspected yesterday and today, these are the single user restrooms.
This is off the comments, right?
This is off the comments, I'm told they'll be out of here tomorrow.
Okay, yeah, she, she told Hunt, by Saturday, I want my weekend.
The supervisor. So this was all two separate bathrooms before, this is all now one with separate doors, right off the commons. So I think, I think the number overall between all of the bathrooms is twenty single-stall, single-user restroom.
There are cameras going in, um, there was a.
And, and I wanna bring some clarity to that, there's some little rumors going around the community. Like, there's not, there's not cameras right in the, in the toilet area, there's not anything reflecting off of a mirror. They are just out, out in the hall that just shows the opening, like, you'll see it, like, right from that angle, right there.
Yeah, that's what you'll see.
Right here.
Yeah. Yeah.
And that, and it just.
It's the common area.
Same thing we have at Central, we had at the end of last year when we did them over it, at Central by the auditorium, same exact system.
So. Continuing, uh, into, I've been told there'd be done October first, we'll have these spaces.
And we knew that that would not be most likely ready for the start of school.
Yeah, we prioritized the cafeteria.
It was a dream, but probably not, and it's right where they said it would be.
There's three classrooms along this side here that were affected by the construction, we put a restroom in between two of the classrooms. And then the one on the end here has a new restroom and a storeroom, storage room space off of it, those rooms are all ready. And they're, uh, um, teachers are moving into those.
They're in, saw them talk to the teacher last night.
But this is some of the space that's, uh, this is the conditions in on Wednesday, yesterday. So, they'll finish that up. This is the warehouse going in at, uh, maintenance facilities. Footings, foundations, all that, some of the steel for the, uh, building itself is on site now. The rest of the building steel is expected the middle of September, and they'll start erecting that.
So you'll have it on the roof before winter?
Mm-hmm, yeah. And then this is Saban, uh, they started some work on the site, we closed half of the site off, uh, they started some grading work. Some utility investigation out there, avoid having to move utilities, um, right now. But, uh, they're gonna do half of the site, grade it, pave it, redo the sidewalks and that, and then they'll move to the other half. Do the same thing, flip back and forth, maintain access to the building, and the interior demo is started.
They needed it so bad, it was so bad.
All right. Thank you, appreciate it.
Yeah, good stuff.
Sustainability report?
Yeah, so a couple of things, one, um, one cool one, so our principals, uh, Jesse and Dan have been working with our principals and one initiative that the group's been working on, and that our principals are working on inventory is for applications to go in this spring for all of our schools to be at least on the first level of the Michigan Green Schools program. Um, so that's something the, the team really wanted to, to see, um, we have some schools that already are. Um, but one of the things that, uh, we wanted to do is get every school started on it, so, um, I think that's, uh, gonna be a, a really good thing, I think that we have buy-in from everybody to do that, and so, that's an exciting thing. Another, uh, conversation, we've had, uh, um, a, uh, opportunity to have a facilitator come in um, uh, from, uh, Northwest Ed, and we've been doing work towards, um, a- aligning the work of the group with the district's mission and vision as of, we have it currently. Um, and, and taking that as we begin to work on a one-point-O, um, a climate action plan. The, some that Interlockin has, the, the, um, I had the chance to go out and see Holly, uh, went to, was before she passed, we had the chance to do a session out at Interlockin, and Emily Umbarger, who's the, uh, director out there for, um, their sustainability work, uh, is on our committee, she's a TCAP's parent, a Westwood parent. And so, uh, we are looking at what would a one-point-O version of that, they're, they're quite a ways down the road in theirs, but you know, really trying to figure out what are things that are actionable, that can be done, that, um, you know, that make a difference. Um, but really with a focus on how can we engage kids in that work? Um, in empowering our AP environmental court classes, our, uh, environmental clubs and that element, so we had the chance to sit through that, I think it was a really, really good session. And then, uh, we will have Mary Ann from the ISD back again next month, and hopefully we will have all of that alignment work done, and then we are going to talk about what are some of our initial ideas of what goes into that one-point-O plan. The other thing, um, that I'll bring up that I've had the conversation with them is, is, we also did, um, I did go through and put the paperwork in to apply for two more electric buses, um, we did receive the grant from the state of Michigan. However, the EPA grant is in flux, um, we don't know if the money's going to continue with that or not. It's, um, it was supposed to be announced in May, um, and, and so it's a little bit of just a a, uh, uh, unknown kinda status at this point of where that's going to go, but, um, you know, with the work that's happening on a transportation, all that. Our team knows about it, again, we've received the state one, but without the, the EPA funds, we, it wouldn't make us whole enough you know, to really be able to do an additional two, so, um, we'll, you know, keep up on, on what that looks like and, uh, keep, uh, both this committee and the board notified of where that is, so, that was the work that was done last month, uh, you know, we, we got about halfway through the, the work with the debate of the team, uh, but they're excited to bring, uh, Mary Ann back and, uh, get that work done here this next meeting that we have.
All right, thank you. Design review update.
Yep, so, I'm gonna start, uh, with Central High School, so just trying to, uh, keep you guys abreast of what we're, uh, currently working on, so we have been working very closely with the direct user group being the principal, the athletic director, coach, and a PE teacher on, uh, what is needed at that building as far as, uh, during the day, after school, security, everything. And so this is kind of like a mock-up, we've seen this before, tearing down the original and replacing something, um, exactly in its place. So that's kind of the area that we're working in, and you'll notice we're, we're planning for a bus loop, that is not what it's gonna look like, but the goal is to get all of the, um, I see, oh, there we go, so currently buses are back in this fire lane. So the goal is to get all of the buses in and out on Milliken Road here, um, so we would be shutting down these parking spaces here using this just for staff parking, and you'd have an in and an out for buses right on Milliken, and then all other traffic, we would combine these two parking lots. All other traffic would be coming from eastern, entering the building here at the main entry. So one single point of entry for all athletics and during the day, um, events. So here is a mock-up of what we're dealing with as far as detail goes, uh, I know you can't really read it too, too well, you can zoom in and on, on it on your computers. Um, but we're looking at the main point of entry being here, single point of entry, the athletic offices are here. Um, all of these offices have windows, so they can see all of the student activity, uh, coming towards the building. And then the main office is here, so reception area, principal's office, and again, windows all along here, all along here so they can see students coming from buses and all of the activity coming from the road, um, the rest of the main office um, areas, conference rooms, this. This is the main entrance for athletics if they would like to use it that way, which I think they will. Um they have this marked as a Hall of Fame. They have a lot of plans here uh to really make this um space special. Um concessions uh here, some school stores, some single user restrooms. Um uh group restrooms, storage, and then some referee lockers, uh restrooms, showers. Um these two areas here, you'll see in just a second how prominent they are as far as visual visual points of, this is a point of entry to the building. Um so we can obviously can control both parts with lighting and with controls, so that people know which area they're supposed to enter during the day. It will be here. This is the focal point. They actually have to walk into the office. Um they can see, the receptionist can see what's going on from the window, so we have a lot of visual, which is the standard that we've done at other buildings with a single point entry, safe and secure vestibule. Um and then this is the corridor that turns and goes towards the athletic wing. This right here at this corner here is your um weights and conditioning. Got it right?
You did.
Um so that's kind of the layout, if you will. We're still working on the fine detail. We actually have a meeting next week with a small user group that Ben and Justin had already met with. Um John Sonneman kind of presented what that group was talking about. Our architects are gonna be here to start talking about historical value, things that are important to the building, things that we might be able to be creative about. They're talking about using the current bleachers and making benches throughout the building and, you know, putting the current Trojan head, although it's not terribly old, putting that in the center of the Hall of Fame on the on the floor and some of the things that we'd like to do to make sure we have that historic um recognition. So this is kind of like an overview initially of what it looks like. Obviously, we still have a lot of detail to go. This is just a high-level schematic design. Um one of the things that's appealing is really just making sure people see like the the whole intent here was to make it bright and light. The nice thing is we can can have windows north facing, um so it'll bring some light into the gym without a lot of um hindrance from the light. Um they did the sloping here just to kind of make some architectural features. But you can see here from some of the side views how prominent the main office is, how obvious it is. And so right here, um and again on the side, so this is the athletic um entrance. So you can see that it's a focal point. It's meant to be a focal point. Um these are um windows and doors uh leading into the athletic office and then the main office here and it kind of turns around the corner, which becomes this side here. So this is kind of what we're working with, what we'd like to show them, get some comments and feedback, just as a a working group to bring some information back to the board and kind of make some, help us make some decisions going forward. So the um architects are bringing their interior designers to have some conversation. She's bringing some thoughts and ideas of other buildings they've done some stuff with, just to kind of have a work session and hear from them. Any questions?
Looks good.
Yeah, I'm excited. I'm very excited.
It's nice to see the main office. It's kind of gets lost, I think, in the current building. So it's nice to have it kind of front and center and the entry to the athletic, same thing, like the gym, you know, the gym that you don't know. There's not really a main entrance. There's entrances.
As you know, you guys know better than anybody. It was like seven different buildings.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Exactly.
It finally kind of puts it all together.
We plan to make it very obvious and intentional.
Yeah.
And they've got some thoughts with lighting and signage, so. Um this is uh just a floor plan of West Middle School, so you can see where we're at. We we are really, really struggling. We were really struggling to make it fit within the existing structure. We were trying at all costs to not do an addition. Um and and that's why when we get to the uh district purchases, I'll show you those differences that um we were gonna discuss before. Um but I believe that right now the budget is two point five million for West Middle School because we are having to do an addition and we've dedicated it for choir. So right here. Uh fifteen hundred uh square feet. No, five thousand square feet, right?
No, fifteen hundred.
Fifteen hundred, okay.
Does that go into the courtyard?
It does. So it's directly across from the library.
Yeah.
Um which is nice because it's still kind of in the ce- the central area, if you are, if you will, for music. So it's really not too far from the music hallway um in the music office.
You you keep going right from the current choir room.
Yeah.
Yeah. So this will be the music office and then this is that main main hallway. Um we're leaving the little theater. We are stealing some space from the stage for band storage. The basic concept here is for band and orchestra is we've eliminated storage and that will become the classroom. So the classroom itself is getting bigger per se for classroom area, but really not getting bigger as far as um square footage because um we just have removed all the storage. So now they have all that usable space. We had to move the storage elsewhere. So they have a bigger classroom um to work with students. They have more stor- storage. We're talking about dedicated space for band here and here for storage. Um we've reviewed multiple times what kind of activities they have in the little theater. And if this extra space that we've taken from there will harm it, actually some of it was already gone from there. Maybe shouldn't have all been highlighted in blue, but anyway, um so that will work for them. We're working with Wanger as it relates to storage and making sure that all the instruments have a storage space, that we have the right kind, that it fits. Um as far as um in the different spaces, we've kind of closed off that weird uh corridor here where it used to be open. So you just have a single loaded corridor um for supervision issues. That will be really nice to be able to look down the corridor and have um nice supervision there. Uh we'll be closing off this area here. It used to be kind of open to the uh little theater. That'll be closed off with a double door right at the end of the ramp. Um and then um we are doing some renovations over here as part of the library. This space here already existed up into this line. We're gonna take it a little bit further. We've gotta move the school store. It used to be over here, what is now the music office. And then we're adding a conference room, which is desperately needed for the building. So we're just carving some space out of the existing li- library for that. So that's where we are currently. I I feel like the music staff is super happy. Um they feel like they've been heard. Obviously, we still have a lot of details to get through. Um but we're in a really good spot with music at West Middle School.
Good.
Good. And this, yeah, like you said, the staff is, they're feeling really good about that, so, okay.
Yes. Yeah. Yeah.
Library okay with losing space?
Well, yes. Yes. Um we're we're working on that. I I think as far as that library goes, they have a lot of space. I think it's hard for people when we say we're taking space to envision what it could be, just a little bit different with the same space, so um they're they're good. And Evan oversees that group and he's working with them and i- it'll be great space.
Yeah, there's a lot of, there is a lot of space in that library.
Really large library and there there's a lot of stacks right now, some of the old bookcases that are empty. We can, we can do something different. Some of them are really short and there's empty wall. We can, we can make some improvements there to make sure that they have what they need and it's organized in a way that makes sense. So that's where we're at with that.
Alright.
And then um this is under um, it's at the very bottom, but I'm gonna go to it because it's part of the presentation. I just wanna share with you um transportation. So we um, we're gonna have some difficulties with transportation with some construction. So this is a map of the construction for Interlocken. So this little corner here is Grand Corners. Um these two black dots are the two bridges they'll be shutting down and this is the detour to go all the way around. So we actually had to add a route uh for Silver Lake. There's no way we would have made it on time with this detour. Um when uh Tyson did the bid, he did have some remaining routes open. Um we had four applicants come in um thanks to HR and their efforts um to do some um nice media pushes. They, we've actually gotten four uh drivers already credentialed um come into the district and so that'll be really nice. We are still short drivers. Uh we are, knock on wood, better than we were last year to start school year, so um that's good news. Uh but this is the um, I believe it's like a month and a half long. Um so this will be a challenge for us. It actually starts September third on Tuesday, first day of school. Um we've routed this way. All the drivers have done their dry runs, meaning they've tested them with their tablets, making sure that the timing is accurate. We've communicated the stops correctly, so um it it's hard to tell the impact of all the other traffic and how slow it'll be. But um I anticipate some kind of um uh delays the first week of school and we'll have to be patient and kind of make the adjustments as needed. Um Silver Lake's the one I'm most worried about. Their their start time's right in the middle of West Middle School and Blair. Those routes are kind of all together. So they did add a route. I I'm still concerned, but I will work through it and make the adjustments as as necessary. So I just wanted you to be aware of that.
And their construction starts first day of school?
Yeah, just conveniently, right?
Yeah. Huh.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, it says till October eighteenth, so.
So we'll struggle through.
What's that?
We'll struggle through.
We will struggle through.
Okay.
Yep. And it, that's a long detour.
Yes, super long.
Yep. So.
Alright, um finance?
Uh for finance, uh like John said, at the the board meeting, really not much of an update, unfortunately. Um uh we're really good with staffing. Uh we're good with our numbers. We feel really good about uh where we are with uh um the pending contracts um that will um be asking the board to approve in September. Um a lot of good feedback there. Um I know Ty, you had a question finance-wise?
Yeah, I mean, I tried to ask it Monday night and I did poorly, but I was just trying to wrap my head around what we approved of the final amendment for twenty-four, twenty-five and what uh I think Dave was his name told us last finance meeting. So can you just help?
Yep, absolutely. And I and I understand confusion too when you're looking at this document. So when we pers- present this document, we're, we try to be very clear that the board is approving um the full draw of. So let's just say, for example, if you're looking at amendment two for twenty-four, twenty-five, it actually shows two point nine six nine one six two as a negative. That's what we're actually formally asking you to adopt. However, we have a historical uh variance of one point five million that we always take into account in our presentation. So that's why when I said our final amendment was one point five, that's how I got that.
Half of three.
Yes.
Got it.
Yes. So formally, we ask you to adopt um the the total number, um because that's legally what we're able to spend. But because of our twenty-year history of one point five to one point seven million in variance, and there's reasons why we keep it that way, um when you take that into account, our final amendment was one point five negative. And I think currently, do you know where we are currently after that reduced uh revenue that we received in our August state aid?
And and let me just talk to that while she's thinking. We, the weird thing of state funding is is that we get, I think it's ten payments, uh right? We do not get our final payment until August, which is a month after our fiscal year has closed, okay? And that last payment from the state, they still have the ability and often make adjustments of what we get on grants and different things. So I'll give you an example. Two years ago, we originally had an allocation of like one point four million dollars for transportation. And then as we finally got our payment, it was well under a million dollars. And they often wait till that last payment to reconcile those differences and they don't even give us often a rationale why. That number's different. Sometimes it's they they didn't have enough money appropriated and so they had to prorate everybody's payment in the state, all that. So until you actually get that last payment, you don't know. And we've even had situations where after the fact, with the new budget being done, they change it again and you get, you can get docked or increased again, even after that, but that August state aid payment. So that was what Christine was alluding to, that we didn't get as much in that August state aid payment with some of those adjustments as we originally thought we were going to.
And I know Dave will be coming back in November.
For a full presentation and that will be the final closed book, yes.
Got it.
Correct.
So when he spoke here, we thought we would be adding five sixty-three after we received the August state aid. I think it's a hundred something.
I see. So it changed again.
Three hundred, okay, yeah.
Yep.
Okay, I will wait till November.
Yes. Unfortunately, that number constantly changes.
Well, yeah, I was just curious, like I'm.
Yeah, it's it's unfortunate.
I know I'm new, but you know, we I approved, we approved, you know, deficit spending of three million, like, oh man, we just, we just gained five eighty, Dave.
Yes, I know.
That's a three and a half million dollar swing.
I know. It's tough.
It's good though.
And you, and remember when we.
I'd rather have it that way.
And remember when we approved our original, so it says four point four, we take into account the one point five, so nearly three. That was before we even had our state budget, so it's so tough.
Well, I know that. It's a guess.
Yeah, it's it's tough and it, I know it can be frustrating for people that we keep changing it, but.
I appreciate, I understand now. Thank you.
Yeah.
Alright, um district purchases?
Yes, so um I worked with Scott to try to accomplish the document that you were asking for the last time we met. And I think maybe I've done a good job of representing what you're looking for. Um I'm still keeping the um at the top, the red and the blue area, so those are areas coming to you for action. Um and I try to make sure that you have a heads up on those items, so that in the off chance you see something on here that um you have a lot of questions on or you uh don't support the amount of money, the timing or the project itself, we have time to react to it before we actually start spending money on it. So these are items, um and I'm constantly working with departments to make sure they put items on here. It's not often that something will pop up that hasn't been on here, but it does happen unfortunately. Um so you'll see the next zero to three months, um the items coming to you. Most of the first ones usually are on the agenda we're currently uh talking about. Um we'll be bringing some custodial facilities equipment. That's part of their uh bond facility allocation. Um so out of our total bond, each, some departments, technology, facilities, transportation, um.
Music?
Music. Is that it?
Athletics?
And athletics, thank you. Yeah, it's at the bottom. I should have looked at that. They all get a, an allocation, a one lump sum out of the total bond that they use on an annual basis. And so those items, I don't keep track of as itemized each department does with Wes as it relates to their spending and not being over a budget. But um so anyway, um the blue items then are items coming out four to twelve months. You can see some of the bigger ones coming. Central grade, I'm I'm really working with the architects. Man, they they've got it at fifty-five. They wanna go to fifty-nine. I'm absolutely no on that. Um but we're working on it. We we have a lot of architects that would like to do a lot of fancy cool things and I'm trying to temper that. We wanna make sure that we are paying attention to the history of the building, but also trying to be uh responsible with our funding. So I'm I'm really not trying to let it go over fifty-five. I do not wanna bring to you anything higher than that, so I'm working with them on some of those details. Um and then at the bottom is where I think you were looking for Ty.
Yeah.
Is, these are the items that we've either already spent the money or I've gotten the go-ahead from the board to budget it or John and I have budgeted it out of the hundred and eighty million.
I think I think you did a great job. It's super helpful and I can get rid of my own spreadsheet now, so thank you.
Yeah, there you go. And and um what helps me too sometimes is having the date the board approved it. So if there's any questions, you can go back to that meeting, you can watch the meeting, you can look at the meeting minutes, you can look at the notes, the agenda, any of that information. You can look at the memo, dollar amount, contingency. Um those numbers were the actual approved amounts. They may change. If we don't spend contingency, we might not spend that much. Um for Saban, if we come back, I'm gonna change that number. If it gets approved by the board to go higher such. And then I just left the remaining ten million ninety-five thousand of the eighteen at the bottom. So I hope that helps.
Yeah. No, it does help. I I guess, am I only question, I I assume that the ru- all the roof projects will come in twenty twenty-seven-ish?
That's about when. Um so my my hope is that Central grade, um that we're closer along with Central grade, that we feel comfortable doing a Central High roof sooner rather than later. Um probably twenty-seven though, when we do the rest of this. It would be more efficient and effective to do it at the same time as the other projects as far as contracting goes. So um that's like a six million dollar project. So that's a big one that I'd really like to tackle. Um it'll probably be with twenty-seven bond sales, twenty-seven cash, so.
Okay, great, thank you.
But yes, if you look at the the fifteen-five, I mean, we we're right there. As far as I'm concerned, everything's spent. Obviously, there are projects that I've planned for that can be changed. Um they're all pretty critical in my mind, but obviously they're all up for discussion.
Fifteen-five, meaning that's what's?
That's what's budgeted. Um hasn't been approved by the board, but John and I have put money to that because they were either priority one, two or three items.
Okay, fifteen for the roofs.
Nope, not just roofs. Um.
The other stuff that's coming in twenty, later after twelve months.
Yes. We have a track at West Senior High. We have, yes, all of that.
Super helpful, thank you.
That's the number that kind of gets you to the one eighty.
Okay.
One, I just didn't want you to think there's fifteen million to spend on anything. I wanna make sure there's, yes.
Yeah, so I get it.
Yes.
And wanna make it clear on the field house that what we've approved so far is six hundred and fifty thousand for A and E. And that the rest of it will be dependent on what we see from that.
Right.
Those drawings and the bids.
But officially, the board has budgeted the ten million, so.
Budgeted but not approved expenditure. Okay, just wanna make sure.
Yep.
Alright, anything else?
I don't have anything unless you have questions.
Hmm, I don't. Um motion, Roger?
Support.
See, see.
See.
Wait, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We got it all good.
All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Of course.
See what you started.